Okay, so it's seven o'clock. Thank you, everybody for attending. We will call this meeting to order. Now we'll stand with the microphone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you do one call for states or three? Councilor Roberts here.
Williams here.
Councilor Baumgartner here. Councilor Clavett here. Councilor Penny Group here. Councilor Rockwell.
Here.
Mayor Kiefer. Excuse. Okay, so we're going to move into the approval of minutes for the July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting and entertain a motion on the floor.
Um, the minutes.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any comments? So we're going to move on to our formal proceeding. We are going to open the public meeting. This is a public hearing for the proposed North Urban Renewal District. We are opening the meeting at seven oh one. So we're going to begin by conducting a hearing. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. We'll start with a staff report. Then we'll move on to public comment in the following order. Opponents' comments, opponents' comments, neutral comments, rebuttals if any, and then we will close the public meeting. Start with staff report.
Elaine, are you gonna take the staff reporter? Do you want me to?
Um, I I will give the staff report. I don't know if you want to just give an introduction. I'll give the PowerPoint. Or the.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we have Elaine Howard with us. She hired to uh help us set up the North Urban Renewal. Some of you have met her in our last couple meetings. Uh, Mr. Hammond is here. He's our new city manager, and I'm sure you'll get that opportunity to meet him soon. So uh, that will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. And will you put the PDF up or do you want me to share my screen?
I'm gonna share the screen.
Great. So while you're.
You should be.
That. I'm Elaine Howard. I'm the consultant who is working with you, as was said, on the North Urban Renewal area. I've worked with you on your downtown area also. And on this project, I work with Tiberius Solutions, who does all of the financial work for me on urban renewal plans. So I can't see the projection. Is it?
So I shared the screen. You you have it or you want me to put up the PowerPoint?
Oh, you let me share screen. I will. I will. I will share mine. Sorry, I didn't understand. Okay. So can you see the part, the the PDF?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So what we will go through tonight is the role of the city council. Just a short urban renewal one oh one. Mostly for anybody who is at the meeting who has not heard that before. A plan overview of the boundary projects and financials and the process, next steps, and then conduct the public hearing. The role of the city council tonight is to hold the hearing and receive any input from citizens and if there are any taxing districts. And to conduct the first reading of the ordinance and then to conduct second reading of the ordinance on your next meeting, which I believe is scheduled for September fifth. This is just a little crash course urban renewal one oh one. When we all get our property tax bills in November, we pay our property taxes to the assessor's office, who then transmits those taxes to the regular taxing jurisdictions. That's the city, the county, the school district. Our property taxes in Oregon increase for only two reasons. One is the assessor is allowed to increase our assessed values by three percent per year. That typically happens unless we're in a deep recession. And that is the limit on the amount of property taxes that can be increased unless we have a substantial improvement to our property or there is new construction. If there's a substantial improvement or new construction, the assessor is authorized to do a whole new assessment of the property and establish a new assessed value for that property. When an urban renewal area is formed in a city, the property tax stream is treated differently. So at the time that an area is formed, the assessor will calculate what's called a frozen base of assessed value. That is the total assessed value of all the properties within the urban renewal area. What that little blue represents is that is just for the urban renewal area only. It's not for any other properties in the city. And it doesn't mean that their property taxes are frozen. It just means that where those property taxes go is altered. At the time that an urban renewal area is established, all those taxes continue going to all of the different taxing districts. But over time, once an area is underway, any increase in that assessed value from either the three percent assessed value increase or new construction or substantial improvements will go to the Urban Renewal Agency during the timeframe of the urban renewal area. Again, that is just for those properties within the area. Their property taxes do not change at all. The total amount that they pay, the only thing that changes is to whom the assessor allocates that money. So the money from increases after an urban renewal area is established goes to the Urban Renewal Agency. That base value at the time it was established continues going to all of the other taxing jurisdictions. This just shows that concept in a graph. So it shows that sorry, that went away. Sorry, I'm bringing it back. It shows that the frozen base is equal to the assessed value, and that continues over time and that remains stable. That blue is the increment, which is the tax revenue that goes to the Urban Renewal Agency. And this shows in a little better format the fact that as you're able to do new improvements and new construction or improvements are able to happen within the area, that assessed value raises more than it would have if you didn't have urban renewal area. And that the time your area is completed, all the taxing districts will end up getting more revenues than if there had never been an urban renewal area that helped to create that increase in those property taxes. A new urban renewal plan is adopted through a specific process that's outlined in O R S four five seven. It allows for public input throughout the agency reviews and decides whether to send the plan out for public review. That happened on June eleventh. The county gets a presentation, and I think that actually is. Well, I'll have to check with Karen on that data, and it may be changed later in this document. The planning commission reviewed the plan for conformance with the comprehensive plan and voted unanimously that it did conform to the comprehensive plan on July nineteenth. You're having this hearing tonight, and then the vote on the non-emergency ordinance will be on September fifth. This is the proposed boundary for the urban renewal area. It is the properties that are north of I eighty-four. And you can see that a number of those properties on this tax map are undeveloped. There is quite a bit of new construction of the apartment buildings that is happening within the area. That new construction will help fuel the increment to pay for improvements within the area. There are statutory limitations on the amount of urban renewal that any city may have. You have two other urban renewal areas, the central urban renewal area and the southwest renewal area. When you combine those with this proposed area, you would be at seventeen point eight seven percent of your acreage. You're allowed up to twenty-five percent. And you would be at two point three seven percent of your assessed value. So you are within the statutory limitations on both acreage and assessed value. The projects that are proposed are mostly transportation projects to allow that area to develop. So extending Northeast Boardman Avenue to Olson Road, including pavement curb, gutter sidewalks, and lighting. Improve northeast front street, including pavement curb, gutter sidewalks, and lighting. An alley from Second Avenue to Northeast Third Street. Second Avenue Northeast to Columbia Avenue Construction, Columbia Avenue Northeast to Boardman Avenue Northeast. North Main Street and Boardman Avenue Intersection improvements, and then other transportation improvements as necessary. I do have a map on a site in just a minute that shows where those are. And then you also have the ability to make economic development incentives to help cause development to occur within the area. The estimated cost of these projects were put together by your engineering firm. And they total just about eleven million dollars in constant fiscal year twenty twenty-three dollars, which are those dollars in today's dollars. This is the location of of the projects. So this large purple area is the alley from Second Avenue. No, no, no. I'm gonna get these wrong. Okay, this is the Second Avenue Northeast to Columbia Avenue Northeast. And this is Columbia Avenue to Boardman Avenue. Um, the green is Boardman Avenue to Olson Road. There are the northeast front improvements, and then the alley is down here. Oh, here it is, right there. The financial forecasting is required in any new urban renewal plan. The capacity of this plan in today's dollars is roughly equal to your total project cost, so about eleven million dollars. The maximum indebtedness is twenty-seven million dollars. The difference between the capacity and the maximum indebtedness is both the cost of inflation over time of your projects. Your engineers asked us to use a seven percent inflation rate so that if indeed you have a seven percent inflation over the twenty years, and that does cause those costs of projects to increase substantially, the average rate is typically lower than that. So indeed, you might be able to do all of these projects for a lower amount. But we followed what your engineer asked us, and it never hurts to be very conservative in your estimates on project costs. We all know anybody who has been infrastructure projects in the last couple of years have found that the projects are coming in way above any estimates that they've had. So the maximum indebtedness is the limiting factor on an urban renewal plan. Once you have collected twenty-seven million dollars, you may not collect or spend anymore on projects, programming, or administration for that area. We did not project any long-term borrowing for this area, although you could decide to do that in the future. If you do decide to do borrowing and you have interest on your debt, you can collect that through part of that TIF revenue that you collect from the assessor's office. And that is not part of the maximum indebtedness, so it does not reduce the total amount of money that you can spend on projects or programs. As we said, as I said earlier, the impacts on from urban renewal is on the taxing districts, not on individual taxpayers. An individual taxpayer does not see an increase in their taxes due to urban renewal. But the other taxing districts will not gain any increased value within the area in terms of property tax revenue for the estimated timeframe of this area. This area is projected to go twenty years. I would not be surprised if it is faster than that, given given the amount of construction that is happening now. But the twenty years is again a conservative projection. The impacts to the general government taxing districts are shown on this chart. So Morale County, six million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. Umatilla, Morale. Radio District, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. The Health District, nine hundred and ninety thousand. Port of Morale, one hundred and forty thousand. City of Boardman, six point nine million. Boardman Fire District, a million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Boardman Cemetery, forty-six thousand. Boardman Park, four hundred and ninety thousand. Unified Recreation District, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Vector Control, three hundred and ten thousand. And the Oregon Trail Library, four hundred and fifteen thousand. Education, yes.
On that, on the slide you just showed, now that is what the total we anticipate that they'll be frozen at for that twenty years, correct?
This is the amount that the Urban Renewal Agency gets instead of these taxing districts getting them. So this is the loss of revenue to those taxing districts.
Okay, over twenty years, though, right?
Over twenty years.
Okay.
In the um documents that were provided to you in the report, it does have a chart that shows those projected annually. So you can see each year what those projections might be. The education districts in Oregon are funded a little differently, and the impacts of urban renewal are not direct impacts to them. They typically do not lose money due to urban renewal in your community. Your local school district and the education service district are funded through the state school fund, where they provide funds to those districts on a per pupil basis. And that amount of funding does not go down if you have urban renewal in your community. The community college is funded on classes taken. So again, they are stabilized at the state level. So the funds that might have gone to those state pots of money don't go to those state pots of money. But your individual districts don't receive any less money because the state legislature has access to other funding sources that they are able to use to backfill any loss of property tax revenue to either enterprise districts or housing. Rebates for creating housing or urban renewal. So they are able to access other funding sources to make sure that those schools still get their per pupil and per class ratios. So we have had the agency meeting, the consultant confer letters, which are letters that go to all taxing districts to let them know that an urban renewal area is being planned. Were sent out um July fourteenth, a planning commission. The meeting was July nineteenth, where they did find the conformance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, I still have the county briefing is August sixteenth, and and Karen, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that date. And we have the hearing tonight, and the city council votes September fifth. I'm gonna look at my calendar on that. For some reason, I know that that county meeting got changed, and I am not sure if I changed it on.
It was just moved to hearing.
It's it. We're on the schedule for the sixteenth in hearing.
Great, great. So I did change it in in this presentation. So that is my presentation. If you, I I'll do a stop share, but if you want me to bring up anything again, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Councilor Baumgartner, can we go back to the script and cover the comments in the disclosure section of the hearing before we proceed with taking public comment? Start with number three. Okay. So you don't want to do the proponent comment first? Well. Up in the script, we even found how they get to speak, and then I'm gonna ask the council if they are sitting before we take public comment usually. Okay, okay, thank you. So if you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. Jackie is our city reporter. Um, I will recognize those people wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed to me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium, as the hearing is being recorded, and please speak concise and to the point. I'm gonna ask, are there any city councilors that need to disclose any conflicts of interest? Please indicate the nature and extent of the conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Okay, hearing done. So do we have any proponent comments? Okay, any opponent's comments? Any neutral comments? Any rebuttals?
I I I got a question.
You have questions?
I I just want to make sure I understand this. So the park is gonna lose out of our our taxing funds for nine thousand over twenty here.
Um, did you want to go up to the podium just because we have people online and
Right, that way we can hear you.
They can hear you as well. Thank you.
You'll have to put that in my tone, shall I?
Thank you.
Oh, is it our break text?
George Shimer with the park. You can't hear that?
Can you, Elaine? Can you hear George?
I can, thank you.
My name is George Shimer. I'm with the uh Boardman Park and Rec District. I'm the C E O for there. Um, if I'm understanding, we're gonna lose four hundred and ninety thousand out of our taxable income that we're getting from the county assessor for the twenty years.
So um, may I answer?
Please.
Yes, please.
Okay, you won't lose any revenue that you presently have. All revenue that you presently have continues going to you. What you won't get is from this area, the proposed urban renewal area, any taxes off the increased value within the area over a twenty-year timeframe. And given the projections on potential development within that area, that does equal over that twenty-year time period about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So that is not any revenue you're presently getting. It's foregoing that revenue in the future while this urban renewal area collects that to be able to do those transportation projects.
Good. That comes out to be about twenty-four thousand five hundred. I did my calculation right for three years over the twenty years.
Right, it starts smaller because it's just based on that three percent appreciation. Um, and I can I I've got the document in front of me, so the very first year, it would be six hundred and seventy-four dollars that you you would be projected to forego. The second year, five thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. And then it gets it gets larger over time as development occurs within the area. And I'm sure, after with the Parks District, we did send you a copy of the plan and report. And uh, I'm sure if you need another copy, the city could give you one, but the individual annual tables is on table eleven in the report if you want to look at that after the meeting.
Thank you. So George, that yeah, basically. We're not moving it. You're not losing it. You're not.
They're not gaining, yes.
That makes sense. But once the, once the uh, the uh, urban renewal is completed, whatever tax rate that that is, you'll now gain at that tax rate, which is gonna be a financial jump because of the valuation of the projects they got done.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I think the other good thing I'd just like to comment is that it's pretty good timing because of the prez, the new, all the new development around that does not, that this urban renewal is not here. So you'll be getting an increase in other funding from around. I mean, so it it helps that this is a a more prosperous time to be having this.
And Elaine, if I understand that right, it would just be for that district where you wouldn't be getting it, but for the other districts, if there's an increase, you would be getting that.
Yeah, on the houses, you still.
Correct. You would still get.
Okay, do we have any other comments? Okay, so I would like to, the public hearing is now closed at seven twenty-four. We're gonna move back into our regular city council meeting. Um, we're gonna move into the financial report, remember? The first interview, you have um, financial report in May, May, January, March, April, May. Um, I'm gonna see that the under revenue are big funds that are funded, received the most revenues, or their general fund, who are uh in May, beginning of May, receiving the quarterly trend, get room tax, franchise fees that get nailed by postmark April thirtieth, and so we don't get until beginning of May. Um, that's the goal of that one. Um, you can see usually our building fund is the one that's like really huge. That one was um for money-wise, was a lower month than what we've seen, um, but not necessarily number of commits. Um, they did have a building fund of a lot of expenses, but that is due to the expansion of our city hall, which is for the building department. Um, and so every month, you'll see that that number increases as more construction goes up, the bigger their invoices get. And um, that's all I have. Our interest rates, now that you can see they're um, slowly coming up, uh, which is good for income coming in as interest, um, and lovely, we already got our Geo models set for interest rates, and also it's a good, very good sitting point.
Well, and remember when we, when we did this, uh if if we didn't spend it all, we had to pay back, you know, the interest.
Yes.
So we'll be spending it all, I'm sure.
Yes, yes. Well, again, with inflation on any infrastructure, we are definitely getting every single set that we're earning in interest to finish out the Geo one project. Okay. Any questions on the financial report? So moving on, we are open to public comment. So the are there any interested audience members that would like to write comments? Did anybody fill out a comment card to get rejected? All right, so we are going to move on to the asked items. We have our ordinance, uh, two dash two thousand twenty-three, the North Urban Renewal District. And that, we are, we need to have a motion to, right? I didn't see the question. It looks like Stephen Bus has a question.
Oh.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, everybody. Um, so as you know, I've been coming to talk to y'all about um affordable housing and affordable rent in the city of Boardman. Um, and last time I was here, I talked about Senate Bill six eleven, which was in the process of being passed um through our state legislature, and that has passed into law um with a few of the amendments um from what originally I had uh sort of reported on. Um, and so the changes are that instead of three percent plus annual inflation, it's now seven percent plus annual inflation. Um, and then instead of a base eight percent, it's a base ten percent as a rent increase cap. Um, and unfortunately, the lowering of uh the property age to three years from first tenancy um was not passed, and it still remains at fifteen years from first tenancy. So Portview Apartments and the new Tidewater Apartments still do not fall under this um um rent protection uh legislation. So I encourage y'all to continue the conversation about adding definitions of affordable housing into the city code or something uh along those lines of like rent protection to help continue uh to have Boardman grow.
Thank you. Thank you most present. Okay, so we have ordinance two dash two thousand, two thousand twenty-three, uh, North Urban Renewal District. Any motion on the floor to to read the ordinance by title only?
Or.
It's in. In its entirety, you're correct. Yeah, so do we need a motion on the floor to read the ordinance two dash twenty, two thousand twenty-three in its entirety?
I'll make a I'll make a motion um to approve the first reading of the ordinance, number two dash twenty twenty-three, and ordinance making certain determination. to approve the first reading of the ordinance number two dash twenty twenty-three in ordinance, making certain determination, is this, am I reading the right one? Making certain determinations and findings relating to and approving the North Urban Renewal Plan and directing that notice of approval be published.
Do we have a motion on the floor to have a second?
I second.
Okay, all of you say aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
All right. City of Boardman. City of Boardman Ordinance Number Two, two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance making certain determinations and findings related to the approving and approving the North Urban Renewal Plan and directing that notice of approval be published. Whereas the Boardman Urban Renewal Agency, as the duly authorized and acting urban renewal agency of the city of Boardman, Oregon, is proposing to undertake certain urban renewal activities in a designated area under CLEP pursuant to O R S Chapter four five seven, and whereas the agency pursuant to the requirements of O R S Chapter four five seven have caused the preparation of the North Urban Renewal Plan dated September fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and attached hereto in Exhibit A, the plan, and incorporated hereby by reference, and the plan authorizing certain urban renewal activities within the North Urban Renewal Area. And whereas the agency has caused the preparation of a certain urban renewal report dated September fifth, two thousand twenty-three, attached hereto as Exhibit B, the report, and incorporated hereby, by reference, to accompany the plan as required under O R S four five seven point zero eight seven, and whereas the agency forwarded the plan and report to the Board of Planning Commission for review and recommendation. The planning commission considered the plan and report on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and passed a motion that the plan is in form with the Boardman Comprehensive Plan attached hereto as Exhibit C. And whereas, the plan and the report were forwarded on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three to the governing body of each taxing district affected by the plan, and the agency has thereafter consulted and confirmed with each taxing district, and whereas, on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, the city met with representatives of Morrell County to review the plan, including proposed maximum indebtedness for the plan, and whereas, the city council has not received any written recommendation from the governing bodies of the affected taxing districts. And whereas, on July eighteen, twenty twenty-three, the city caused notice of the hearing to be held before the council on the plan, including the required statements of O R S four five seven point one two zero three to be mailed to the utility customers within the city's incorporated limits. And whereas, on August first, twenty twenty-three, the city council held a public hearing to review and consider the plan and report, the recommendation of the Boardman Planning Commission, and the public testimony received on or before that date, and to receive additional public testimony. And whereas, the city council found that the plan conforms with all applicable legal requirements. And whereas, after consideration of the render presented through this state, the city council does by this organ's desire to approve the plan. Now therefore, the people of Boardman do as follows, Section One, the plan implies of all applicable requirements of O R S Chapter four five seven and the specific criteria of four five seven point oh nine five, in that, based on the information provided in the report, the Boardman Planning Commission recommendation, and the public testimony before the city council. Number one, the process of the adoption of the plan has been conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of Chapter four five seven of the Oregon revised statutes and all other applicable legal requirements. Number two, the area designated in the plan as the North Urban Renewal Area is blighted and defined by O R S four five seven point zero one zero one, and is eligible for inclusion within the plan because of conditions described in the report in the section exempting physical, social, and economic conditions and impacts on municipal services, including the existence of inadequate streets and other right-of-way open spaces and utilities within the area. O R S four five seven point zero one zero one E, and the prevalence of depreciated values, impaired investments, and social and economic maladjustments to such an extent that the capacity to pay taxes is reduced, and tax receipts are inadequate for the cost of public services rendered. The number three, the rehabilitation and redevelopment described in the plan to be undertaken by the agency is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the city because ab- absence of completion of urban renewal projects, the area will fail to contribute its fair share of property tax revenues to support city services and fall to develop and or fail to develop and or redevelop according to the goals of the city's comprehensive plan. Number four, the plan conforms to the Boardman Comprehensive Plan and provides an outline for accomplishing the projects described in the plan, as morally described in eleven of the plan and the Boardman Planning Commission recommendation. Number five, no residential displacement will occur as a result of the acquisition and disposition of the land and redevelopment activities proposed in the plan, and therefore, the plan is not included provisions to house displaced persons. Number six, acquisition is an eligible component of the plan, and it's necessary to cure blight in the area and promote economic prosperity. Number seven, adoption and carrying out the plan is economically sound and feasible in that eligible projects and activities will be funded by urban renewal tax revenues derived from a division of taxes pursuant to Section one Z, Article nine of the Oregon Constitution, and O R S four five seven point four four oh, and other available funding as morally described in the Sections three through six of the report. The city, number eight, the city shall assume and complete any activities prescribed it by the plan, and, number nine, the plan consult, the agency consulted and conferred with affected overlapping tax districts prior to the plan being forwarded to the city's council. Section two, the North Urban Renewal Plan is hereby approved based upon review and consideration by the city council of the plan and report the Boardman Planning Commission recommendations, each of which is hereby accepted and the public testimony, and the public testimony in the record. Section three, the city manager shall, shall forward or with to the agency and the Morrell County Assessor a copy of this ordinance and all attachments. Section four, the agency shall thereafter cause a copy of the plan to be recorded in the records of Morrell County, Oregon. Section five, city administrator in accordance with O R S four five seven point one one five shall publish notice of the adoption of the ordinance, approving the plan, including the provisions of O R S four five seven point one three five in the Eastern Oregon newspaper no later than four days following the adoption of the ordinance. Passed and adopted by the Boardman's and Council this fifth day of September, twenty twenty-three, and signed by the mayor in authentication of passage.
Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
So that, these are reading of the entirety of the ordinance number two dash two thousand twenty-three, North Urban Renewal Plan, are there any questions?
Something going, yeah.
I did, I saw them pretty.
Yeah, I saw, I saw three things. I, I saw three things I wanted to.
All right, so we're gonna move on to resolutions, we have Resolution fifteen dash two thousand and twenty-three, consolidated fee schedule. Are there any questions in regard to that resolution?
Yes. Uh. I guess I would like to know, to start off with, if this was presented to the city manager pro temp in advance.
So, um, in reviewing the memo, no, I was not, like, I was not, uh, aware of the changes, so what I will tell you is that, uh, uh, I sent out after our last council meeting, so all department heads, if there are any proposed changes to the fee schedule to send me what their current fees are, what the proposed fees are, and why they suggested an increase. The only one that it appears that I can see is gonna be, uh, planning department. I did not see any other fee increases, or any of them. Other than our garbage team that are working with us.
On our first paper, there are a couple that there were increased interest with the cash flow from express bill pay. Um, we only have one N F P of thirty dollars, which is what our banking account charges us. But if they get declined before they get to the bank, express bill pay, which is our uh, third-party processor for credit card payments online, um, has different fees which are lower, so we thought it'd be fair for the customer to be charged the lower rates than just the flat thirty that we had implemented. So, it's a savings, um, to our customers. Um, and um, the main society, they increased their fee for the surrender fee from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars. But again, that's the past due, uh, because currently we're using fifty dollars service whatever that we take.
So I spoke, uh, uh, I received an email back from, um, the building official plan. He advised me that he anticipated that the plan would be, uh, scheduled to change. Um, the, the rest of the fees that I, uh, I'm aware of are by the planning department. Um. I would tell you that there's been several discussions about fee structure and, um, it has been the direction that I've taken from, uh, my experience with the council over the years, that we want to keep our fees reasonable and low as possible to encourage development and construction within the city of Boardman. Um, I would tell you that financially, the city of Boardman is, is not in dire straits. And I, I don't know that I would recommend these type of increases. Um, it's up to the council to make that decision. I just don't think financially we're in a position where we have to chart these kind of increases.
Any other comments or questions?
So are you suggesting that if we decided not to approve this, we'd be okay financially? Yeah, I guess that's what I'm down, what you're saying is like, you don't really think that we need to increase fees?
I think at some point we'll have to look at this, but I don't know that we're in a position today to have to increase those fees um, to the extent that we're, we're talking about. Have you not, not reviewed this before, uh, picking up on the council packet? Um, I, I, if the council, uh, so desires, they can ask Carla what her thoughts are, and might be, I, I actually attached a memo, and she might be able to give you more explanation as to the reasons for the increase. But it would be my recommendation to, um.
I have one comment on that, and I don't know which of the planning fees, um, I'm not sure where these fees go for each one, but some of these are require multiple public notices to be published in a newspaper, so the means are to pass her back that expense. And just like anything else, those fees have gone up. Um, where we public notice, I think they're ranging from two hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty dollars. And some of these require two public notices, um, but I can't tell you which ones specifically, I'm not familiar with that.
So, or you're talking public notices to the E O?
Yes.
Kristen Harrell?
Yes, they have to be published in the newspaper. I believe Carla is online. She's online.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Okay, perfect, so, um, yeah, Marta makes a really good point, um. When we went through and looked at um, what the action was and what kind of the costs were, um. Well, let me back up a little bit, when, when we generated the fee schedule for Morrell County, I mean, as many of you know, I was there for eighteen years. We were not in the business of making money either. Um, the fees that we charged at Morrell County, for all intents and purposes, covered the costs of operating the department, not the personnel costs, but the cost of running the department, buying paper and pencils, buying paper, paying for public notices. And in a busy year, those public notice costs can be really, really high. I think Marta could talk to you about the difference between a year when there were a number of appeals at a lot of meetings and a year when there's not. And there can be a real difference in that cost of public notices. Public notices now for a hearing run about two hundred and fifty dollars. So when we're charging two hundred and fifty dollars for an action that is going to hearing, if we're not paying for staff with that, we might be covering the cost of the public hearing. So, um, that's what you kind of see there in that base fee, um, or in, in those actions. So, many of these things go to, at a minimum, there is a uh, mailed notice that is required if it's a type two division, uh, type two decision, and that is a type three decision, so it's a conditional use permit, or a land, well, a subdivision, or a site design review. Um, so all of the activity that happens in our commercial district goes, and most of it goes in front of the planning commission. Subdivisions go in front of the planning commission, those are the ones that you're seeing at four hundred and fifty or six hundred dollars. And that's covering that cost of, of public notice and the cost of mailing, because many of these also require a mailing. And by the time you run the, 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 the notice through the copier and make sure the map goes out in color so people can understand what they're looking at, and putting the stamp on the envelope, it's about probably a dollar or a doll, dollar and a half or two dollars for every envelope that goes out. So, um, you know, I, we can certainly look at it and pare some things back. Um, my intent was not to make the city money, my intent was to try to cover the expenses of the planning department, and the planning function.
Right, I have a question that I can ask.
Yes.
Um, so, does it have to go to, say, the Eastern Oregon, can it not be ran through our local paper, your Boardman? Is that not considered media enough, I guess, I don't, I guess?
It's the timing of it.
Yeah, it's the timing.
Because it needs to be in a daily newspaper versus a monthly paper, okay?
Well, it's not so much, it's not so much that it has to be in one kind or another kind, it's that it has to be published twenty, at least twenty days prior to the, to the hearing. So the timing for the, um, sorry, uh, the moral, North Moral Times often doesn't correspond with what we need. Um, and, and even more so for a city council public hearing. Um, because you do meet the first week, and that's when they're, they're publishing, so we would be publishing, you know, a full month or more, and oftentimes we don't have the, we, we don't know in that, I mean, so we have to publish twenty days before, we can publish it twenty-one days, um, twenty or twenty-one days in the East Oregonian and meet the requirements. Um, when we try to do that with the North Moral Times, we're delaying hearings, and people already get frustrated with bland use planning because it can take a long time. So, yes, it is the East Oregonian, um, that does, it, it, it tends to be the paper that also has the greatest readership, and if you want to really achieve um, that connection with readers between their print readership and their online readership, it's pretty well consumed in, in the North Moral County area.
Well, isn't that, on the, our public record, our news media and public record also, I think we have to declare, you know, that we, we don't publish one time in one newspaper, and just out of the convenience decide to publish in the Hattner. And just out of the convenience, decide to publish in the Hatner Gazette this next time because they are gonna meet our date. That the EO is our. Public records. Yeah, and so you can't just. And yeah, so they are the ones that seem to, and now that they're only publishing three times a week. Is making it harder for us to meet our time dates, I mean, Carla has to count a lot.
So then, a couple of other questions then would be, okay, so what is our total cost that we spend on an annual basis for these? These types of notices and um so that we kind of know, you know, are we, is it worth absorbing the cost? And then the other thing is, if that's not the case, then um. We look at using a different newspaper that could give us a uh a better price. I mean, if they're only printing three days a week, I think the Hermiston Herald only prints two days a week.
They're they're the same company.
I I know that, but what I'm saying is, is like, if they're only printing, I mean, what's what's two days and three days?
It's back to that. I mean, Carla answered.
Timing thing, but what I'm saying is, if we can negotiate with a different newspaper. At a at a lower rate, why don't we do that?
So I've I've not been, I've I've never been successful in trying to figure out how to get them to lower their prices, it's a set rate. Um we pay it, the county pays it. Um I I I I suppose we could attempt to negotiate with them, I don't think, I I just honestly, I'm gonna be honest, I don't think that will go very far. Um it they have a price schedule and and just like we have a price schedule. Um that's it, it's what it costs to do that kind of work. Um timing is is difficult, I'm giving us less options with the Hermiston Herald, and again, it's a readership. It's it's about, it's about making sure you're you're meeting your requirements under goal one, goal one is our community involvement goal. We are required to, under the law, to reach out and publish. Um. Switching from from the East Oregonian that has a larger readership to the Hermiston Herald that has a much narrower readership. Is actually counter to what we're required to do as far as reaching out and engaging the community.
So that my, it's sorry to interrupt, but then my other question would be, what is their actual readership? Uh Warman residents through the EO, because my understanding years ago, and I was in, you know, I worked for them. Years ago, and Boardman was very low on readership, and that's why they stopped selling newspapers physically in Boardman a long time ago. So. I guess my question is, using that reason, then maybe that's not entirely accurate, that's all I'm saying.
I couldn't tell you what their specific readership numbers are in Boardman. Um. I I think readership um has shifted from their print version to their online version. Um I know their online version goes to a lot more places than their print version does, how much of it actually comes into North Wall County, I don't know, I don't have those numbers. Um. But it is the, you know, it is the newspaper. Um. It's the preferred newspaper for people go to look for for notices and those types of things. I mean, I've had people tell me. Hey, I look for things in the EO under the public notices, that's where they go, because historically, for. Not only Boardman, but Irrigan, um the communities in West Umatilla County, Moro County, Umatilla County, they all use. And and as I understand it, the city uses the East Oregonian for our budget committee notices. For all of those notices of of record that we're required to do.
Thank you.
Carl, would you address just a minute, um it's a second one from the bottom on the first page. Plan and code amendment with goal exception to go from fifteen hundred to three thousand. Uh in this in your memory.
So yeah, let me get there, let me get there. So. Which page are you on?
I think I'm on your first page of your memorandum to the council. It's not on the finding doc- document.
Right, so the three, the three thousand was, so last year when we adopted fees, we said, this is what we're proposing for twenty-two. Looking forward to twenty-three, we would propose something higher. If you actually look on the next page, actually the third page. I think what we're proposing for that one is to increase it just to two thousand, not to three thousand. So the, what that is, is an amendment, whether it be to the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan. Um the downtown development plan, the TSB, if an applicant comes in. So if we if we were to wind time back and redo the Tidewater. Um application, it would be that kind of application that somebody would come in. That it's not just a simple subdivision, it's not a site design review where I'm gonna build. Um multifamily housing in a place where it's already approved for that, I'm gonna do some completely different that the zone doesn't allow for. It's a change to all of our comprehensive plans, it's usually a very involved process. Um minimum of two hearings, can be many more. Um and from a staff perspective and timing, those types of things take at a minimum a hundred and twenty days. And can take as long as eight months or a year to get through the process. So in in that, you may have a false start, you might. Go to hearing, have somebody, you know, come in and say, oh, no, no, we want to think about this. There's usually coordination, depending on where it's proposed at, there may be coordination with ODOT or with county, so there's just a lot more involved.
So what you're saying is that the proposal was to increase it to three thousand, but in the ordinance, you only increased it to two thousand.
Yes.
Carla, I have a question as well. Um. Thank you very much for explaining just how um um the cost is broken down. Um I was just wondering, was um some of those estimates also um based on neighboring um. Counties, like what they're charging, neighboring cities, what they're charging?
Yeah, yeah, um what I will tell you is that um. Trying to find that balance between keeping your fees reasonable for, you know, the local person that wants to come in and build their house. Versus the developer who's coming here from out of state, out of county, out of region. Um it is a tricky balance, and so that's why you see the single-family dwelling is at fifty dollars, we're not proposing that we increase that. Um but for but for the developer that's coming in and proposing the new hotel. And maybe needs to go through a master plan community. I can tell you, if they were doing that in Lane County or Lynn County or in the Portland area, their fees would not be two thousand dollars, they would be twenty thousand dollars. So in comparison, yes, we are, we're way under those larger jurisdictions that are kind of beyond arms' reach. But we're in the ballpark with the county, we're in ballpark with some of the, some of the comparable cities around us. So yeah, we did, we did look at that. Um you know, we started this long enough ago, I I and I'm not in the office, so I don't have that stuff um at at hand, but we did look at that. Um last year really closely and tried to align it with um light jurisdictions in the area. I think we looked at Hermiston and Pendleton and. Um maybe Umatilla. And and then again, Moro County, because that's, you know, that's right next door.
And I guess don't forget legal fees as well, a lot of the more complicated ones who run by your attorney, and will have those expenses as well.
Well, it's nice to have this conversation. Is so that we all understand what what we're billing people for and what's involved in it. Yeah, I appreciate your. Time, Carla.
I have a question as well. Um so you said that the increase in prices was also to accommodate the increase in in certain appetites and such. Are we experiencing in our apartments already kind of a loss on the pricing or? Um, obviously, they happen to me.
So Isaac, I'll be honest, I didn't catch everything you said, I think you're, let me just repeat what I think I heard. You're asking if we're losing people because the fees are too high?
Okay, we're just already, if neither department's losing money, already. If this is to help the shift in prices for some of the departments, are any of the departments starting experiencing? Coming up short in money in areas, we're having to eat the cost of. Thinking of.
So you're talking about other departments, like like the county department or or an another planning department?
No, I I think I think your question is, is the city of Warman losing money by not raising their fees? Is that why we're trying to raise it to balance it? Is that, was that your question?
Yeah, I mean, I'd appreciate Martin jumping in here too at some point in time, because she certainly understands. And stands, understands but much better than I do, the money coming in and the money going out. I I don't think this is about, again, I I Rick commented early on. This is not about making money or um. Funding the planning function, I think it's about making sure. That we are generating enough fees or enough funds to cover the. Those minor operating costs, so cost of publication, cost of. Um. Uh mailing, those types of things. Um I don't think that planning fees, well. Here's the other thing I will share, and and Jackie can help explain this, because. When I first started, I honestly didn't understand how fees were assessed for commercial and industrial activities. And I would say that I've probably created a loss in planning revenue, more than an increase in planning revenue. Because the formula that was applied to industrial and um commercial actions. Prior to the fee schedule that was adopted a year ago. Was based on valuation that is is was comparable, and again, Jackie can probably explain this better than I can, that was comparable to how it was done. For building permits, so. Um some of the fees for a a simple, I want to build a building in a commercial district. If the building had a high valuation on it, would have been in the multiple thousands of dollars. And that was way out of line with what our neighbors would have been doing. So Jackie, maybe you can, and then maybe Martin.
Yeah. One of them in particular, I can't remember what the valuation was, but I think it was a a project that UEC was doing, and the. The zoning approval fee was eight thousand dollars, when Moro County would have charged two fifty for the same thing. So we've actually lowered by what we did last year in changing those rates. Uh we got them in in line, it's no longer based on valuation, so. Yeah.
Yeah, and and maybe Martin can touch on, you know, maybe a little bit of history and where we were and where we are and. Um yeah.
Well, and uh a whole months ago, when I did the supplemental budget, I have a recall, one of the line items that I asked to increase. Um being able to spend more money on was for legal notices, which are all the public notices, and I think. I needed to increase it about six or eight thousand, I don't remember exactly what the amount was. Um to finish off the year, and that's one line item that increases every year in my budget.
Mm-hmm.
But it's hard to predict how many you're gonna have, I mean. You have to put out versus the year where you already have hearings, so. Yeah, it's hard to predict how many you're gonna have.
And I I would add to that prediction difficulty is. You know, having a hearing is one thing, having five items on that hearing is another, and the notice cost is directly related to how many words are in the notice. So the busier we are, the longer the notices are, and the more they're gonna cost.
So for me, for example. If you're doing a site design review type three, and you want to charge now four hundred fifty dollars plus fifty dollars per unit. And I don't even know what this does, I don't know, this is like apartment complex or something. Um but that looks like it is um. Would be like a fee for an apartment, and maybe that would be legal notices or something along that line.
So um site design review. Three can be a lot of things, and the per unit has to do with. So if it was an apartment complex, or if it was, you know, multifamily, that's where the pure unit comes in. If it's a site design review for a commercial building, it would be the base fee of four hundred and fifty dollars. If it's for a multifamily, then it would be the four fifty plus the fifty dollars per unit.
And that would come with at least one hearing or something along that lines.
Yeah, that would be at least one hearing, plus plus a mailed notice for that, anything in that type-three is gonna be a hearing. And mailed notice, and we've had a couple of instances where that mailed notice is six or eight people. But we also had a mailed notice recently that was about ninety people, so. Um you know, the bigger the, the bigger the parcel and the more people that are joining it, the more the more um pieces of mail that go out the door.
But if no one wants to do a site design review type three over the course of the year, then no one pays four fifty, we don't need any notices for that. So it's sort of a wash. All right?
So, right, right.
So I'm thinking a busy year is paying for itself, but the fee is associated with the actual cost. Of doing the miscellaneous pieces that are outside of review and employment.
Right, I have no way of knowing who's gonna walk through the door, you know, tomorrow, so. You know, if 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 things were to slow down immediately in Boardman. We could see fees go down to, you know, four thousand dollars next year. I I don't think that's gonna be the case, but we don't know what's gonna come through the door, we don't know how many conditional use permits are gonna come through the door, or how. So that's why, I guess that's why, as I looked at, you know, what does? What does the type of review trigger from the perspective of notice and mailing? We tried to balance those fees to, if this is just a staff decision. We're in that fifty, you know, to a hundred dollar range. Um you know, just to cover the cost of of materials. Um. If there's notice to adjoining property owners, then we're in that, you know, one fifty to two fifty range, and then if the. And then if there's a hearing or a public notice, we're kind of in that next range. So and it's the, it's the public notices that are the most expensive part of all of this, from a just a purely fees or our um. Cost of goods sold, so to speak, perspective.
And it does say that on page six, it has minor modifications, our major major modifications, you did, and any hearings required is what. So it becomes a graduated scale for. An extension interpretation, so. I I think I understand, thank you, Carla.
Yeah, you're welcome, right, and some of these things we may never do in the course of a year, too, I mean, you know.
Are there any other questions?
So. So again, uh my recommendation uh might be to uh consider the ordinance. Uh with the current. Charges with the planning department, leave them as they are today. If the new city manager opportunity over the next year, to see what kind of loss, if we are. I- incurring a cost or a loss to their students, and then he can come back to the client and give a. Yeah, this is what, this is costly, this is what, what we're making, what we're not making, and 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 would you agree?
Yeah, and it may not be necessarily here, but just to be able to evaluate it.
So you you'd like to review this ordinance and all the building grid and do like a cost analysis, so that we can.
So.
Bring it back to the table.
If I might, we can't table this, we really need to get this passed, because we already passed the fee increase for the. Uh uh disposal company and they're not, I I'm assuming we're not. Passing those fees on to our customers yet?
No, those were passed by a separate resolution.
But they're included in our fee schedule, so. Um we need to get the resolution passed, so I would recommend passing everything except for of the proposed increases. Except for the planning department, leave our twenty twenty-two fees intact. Give uh the the current city manager an opportunity to work the finances, find out what, if it truly is costing us, but we are losing money. Um and and make sure that we're we're staying within reason. Um. Again, we're not in dire straits. Uh we were, if we were hurting for money, I think I would probably say, yeah, maybe we need to look at this, but. If we want to continue to encourage development. Um and uh not um pass the cost. Onto the customer, that we might want to review this and have a better understanding of what it truly is costing the city.
I think that's what my argument was, basically. Everybody just sees everything going up, and if we have the opportunity to not do that. Then I don't see any harm in that, that's just my opinion.
Since I brought the subject up. I will say that like on that planned unit development. I can't tell you how much time that has taken. I mean. But we've only had one. We may never have another one. But that's, that's why you have a schedule, so that the day you have one. You know what you can charge, and the rest of the time you just don't charge, I mean, there's no, it's no loss to us. So but it was very, it's very time-consuming and costly.
I'm sure.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Carla.
So I I. So I I guess I need to ask for some consideration in this, um. When, when we adopted fees last year. Um, as, as some of you may recall, um, that have been on council for a while. Um, I stepped in at a point in time when, um. Let's just say it felt like I walked into a conflagration. Every fire that could have been burning was burning. And when, when I said, I I need to, we need to look at these fees and make some changes. I established them based on, honestly, some misunderstanding of how the development code read. So that's really another consideration that's happening here. Um, there are fees that have been set for things that we don't do. And we need to at least establish fees that align with what we do do. So let me give an example. The city issued zoning permits, and they issued them, that's what they issued. The development code does not authorize. A zoning permit at all, there's no allowance for a zoning permit in the development code. We issue development review permits. We issue, we go through site design review type one or type two, but we don't issue zoning permits, and yet that's what the. The fee schedule, and again, I apologize that I didn't get it completely right a year ago. But I was still coming out of the fires and trying to figure out what we were doing and how it functioned. So there are a few things in here that. If you want me to go back and and give it another try and bring something back next month, I would be happy to do that. But I need something that corresponds with what we do, not with what I was trying to get to a year ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. So my only concern is that this resolution reads that you have this exhibit A. So if we pass this resolution, we pass everything that's also in exhibit A, so. How do we go about passing this resolution and excluding portions of it that's already there?
So you can pass resolution with the attached amendments, so you can say, we're gonna amend. We're gonna take out the planning stuff, that stays at the twenty twenty two thing, the rest of the. Time to stay, but you're, you're just doing amendment to the.
It it may be cleaner to do what Carla suggested, have her come back with the different exhibit A. Um, that it tried to amend. I mean. Because there truly are fees that last year were passed that we don't do. And fees that we that we do do that we can't collectively, we don't have to. So, um, I. It might be easier just to have her go back and draw a word if you feel it is too high and. Get that, get a direction when it's, you can just pass a a an exhibit A.
That matches. So I understand that we need to pass this resolution, but we need to.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I I thought I heard Marta say that when we pass the garbage. Increase as a resolution, that we can continue, we can change that fee. I mean, people are gonna get that, whether we have it typed on the fee schedule or not. Is that, is that what I think I.
Yes, this is a consolidated fee schedule, so like your building fees, those are all grouped on their own separate resolution as well. So if you're wanting to change any of those, we need to repeal those other resolutions. This is just saying, here are all of our fees, so that you can see them all at once. So that we can have them on our website, and everybody can see what all of our fees are. As just one whole document, instead of having to fish around to every department to figure out what their fees are. Um, that's what this consolidated fee schedule is. Um, planning does not have its own resolution, and so the other. Fees that don't have their own resolution, this is the only way to get past or change is through this one.
I'm just trying to figure out how to go about uh, making this motion, that's my biggest question. So what I'm saying is, I don't think we have to pass this tonight. I I don't think there's an urgency to do so, what Marta just said is true, all of these we have to understand. Um, if if you're not happy with the the fees as presented by the planning department. Give her direction, we can bring him back again next month. And, yeah, Carla.
Yeah, I I'd appreciate some really clear direction. Um, whether that be from council or or somewhere, um, about what you're looking for, I mean, I. I'm gonna be bold, I I I would like to hear a a motion and discussion under a motion, so I can hear. You know, where your concerns are and 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 what you're looking for changes to, so that I can capture those, and then. If need, if need be, bring them back.
Well, I would again recommend that the current city, the new city manager have an opportunity to do that. This should have came through the city manager, like all of his proposals and all of his changes, so that he has a a better understanding of what. All we're trying to change, why we're trying to change, so he can justify that to you.
So. Are you recommending that we table this for next meeting?
I'm good with that as well.
Okay, now we we can get the exhibit A accurate, so that when we pass it, it's all just one and it's done. Do I have any comments from the rest of the council, any concerns?
Do we have to formally ask like what we want, or is that just assumed? Through the city manager?
I think we need a motion to table it. I think we just need consensus to table it. Just because there's council consensus to table something you can for the next meeting.
So it would be advisable to to even tell the city manager, I guess, what you're expecting. Are you trying to increase revenue, are you trying to cover the cost? What is this that the council wants? The city manager to do, and and that way he can fully follow the staff, how to. Design a fee schedule that is appropriate. So we need to do that for a motion.
Um, I I would just like to see that. That it's balanced, so whatever's going out, we're recouping our costs, that that's my consensus. Is there anybody else that have anything to add? Because like you said, we're not in the business of, we're not trying to make money on this, we're just trying to recoup the costs that it's costing us to. To function.
I was personally more concerned with not knowing what this said. So I wanted to have a conversation, and that's why I brought it up, I think we've had the conversation. So then, but. And then if if we want the fees to change it, like after she explained that it, you know, she had three thousand on one page. But really only two thousand, increased it to two thousand on the other page. I think those are things that I can't sit here and read and guess, and so. It's helpful when we have this conversation.
I um, I just wanted to say that after Carla, after you explained it, I um, feel like I understood it a little bit better. Um, and the fees also seem more reasonable, um, and when I think about, um. These are the fees that are set for the entire year, as things continue to increase, our fee would remain the same. And so we have to project for that um, potential increase as well. And so sometimes when we look at how much we're paying now versus. What we're gonna be paying in six months might be very different, and so I think um, just financially, we want to. Have that safety as well. Um, so that we're not in the red, but I also do understand that I, with Mr. Hammond, we um, we wanna be respectful. And make sure that he has an opportunity to review it all.
Isaac, what's your name?
Man, everything that's written said, right? Um, I can just agree with everyone, just, I'm staying even, right, and the same consideration for. Uh, Mr. Hammond, have time to look at all of it, but we're not in any. Um, gray areas by advertising that we have things or services that we do that aren't. Something that puts us in a sticky situation, I assume, so.
Well, that that needs to be corrected.
Yeah.
And so, it it's one thing to have something on your fee schedule that you don't do, because you're never gonna charge that fee. It's another to charge a fee for something that's not on the schedule, right?
So, so Isaac, if I could answer that, um, yeah, I mean, there are a couple of things, that's what I said, so, you know, when we started this last year. The current, the current fee schedule calls out a zoning permit, and we don't issue, the the code doesn't authorize issues of zoning permits. So we're trying to get the language, not just the fees, but the language in the fees to correlate. So the current fee schedule lists zoning permits for a variety of different things. We don't issue zoning permits, we issue development review permits, or we issue site design review type two or type three. We're trying to correlate that, so when somebody comes through, it's like, okay, it's not a zoning permit, but under the old scheme, it would have been a hundred and fifty dollars, so that's what what, that's what we're gonna. That's what we're gonna charge you. Um, so we're trying to make reasonable um, accommodations based on what, how we are functioning and what the fee schedule says, so. Are are we in a world of hurt? No. No, but could somebody say, why are you charging me, you know, why are you calling it this, and your fee schedule says something else? So we we are explaining that when those questions come up.
Brenda. Um, I'd like to say that I'm grateful to Carla for explaining it, because like everyone else had a hard time really understanding. The large number, you know, three thousand or two thousand or four hundred fifty for a single permit. At the same time, I had no idea it costs two hundred and fifty dollars to do a a notice. So if you had to do those, four hundred and fifty doesn't cover it. Not even both. And if Martha's raising her her budget and doing amendments to her budget to cover those costs at eight, nine, and ten thousand dollars. Then that's just that it should be changed. So, um, but I'm, I'm great with the month, let Mr. Hammond have a minute to look at it, and Carla go through it. With Martha more and see if there's anything that needs to be tweaked. But I appreciate part of our.
And I I pretty much said what I said, you know, like, I I'm in business to make money, but at the same time, not. Spend money on things that I don't need to, and so. When we talk about uh, what we're spending our money on, you know, the first thing I think about is, how can we cut that cost? Or how can we save money on that, so, you know, our our largest fees are the advertising to a newspaper. You know, I understand why we have to do it, but at the same time, it's like, do we really need to? Because to me, it seems like a waste of money, that's just, that's just me. But I understand that we do have to do it a certain way, and I get that, but. For me, I would, I would really like to see if there's a way that we can find lower costs on that. That's, that's my opinion and concern, that's all.
Okay. Would you like to see, just put it off for another month, and let Carla and the new city manager? Go through it?
I would, I think that's fair, and I think, I, because what I really think would be great is if Carla and the new city manager. Had a chance to talk to each other about this, they've met each other for thirty minutes today. And uh, I'm sure that if they spoke to each other. Then it would be clearer, and then he could bring it back to us and say, oh, you know, we had a little chat, this is what we wanted. This is what we're proposing.
So Carla, it looks like the direction that we're gonna go in is that we're gonna take, we'll just want to tell the next meeting to allow the opportunity for you. And um, the new city manager Brandon Hammond to discuss and make any changes necessary, and bring it back to city council next month.
Sounds good, thank you, appreciate the conversation that provides some uh, understanding of where you all are at, thank you.
And thank you for answering all of our questions. Yes, we're gonna move along to resolution seventeen, two thousand twenty-three, establish an escrow account for. Is it Rocky Incorporated?
We'll defer to more than.
Okay, you, um, Rocky Incorporated is the contractor that won the award for phase two of our. To our improvement, um, water system improvement, um, which is part of our G L one, this is phase two of it, including. The one million gallon reservoir, um, water building and so forth, so, um, because it's required by law. Um, needing to open an escrow account in which we can deposit the five percent retention that would help them every payment. Um, and I ask for your approval so that we can get that handled in.
So do I have a motion on the floor?
I would move to establish resolution seventeen dash two zero two three. A resolution about an interest-bearing escrow account for Rocky Incorporated for work on water system.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. So we need to update bank signers, because we have a new person in the city of coordination. And we have new uh, Brandon Hammond is a new city manager, so we need to update the signers from that. And we also need to assign bank signers on the two KG contractors escrow account.
And correct, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, we have to have that in minutes for the bank to that.
Do we do those each separate?
Yes, yes, so do I have a motion on the floor to update the bank signers? We need to add Brandon Hammond's.
I move to update the bank signers and custodians of the city bank accounts to include city manager Brandon Hammond, mayor Paul Kiefer. And counselors Heather Baumgartner, Christina Gomez, Karen Pedigrew, Brenda Prophet, Richard Rockwell, and Isaac Williams.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so we need to assign the bank signers to the two KG contractors escrow account, may I have a motion on the floor?
I move to assign bank signers on two KG contractors escrow account. To have Paul Kiefer, Isaac Williams, and Brendan Hammond be the account signers for the two KG contractors, retainage escrow account.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Yes, we need to assign bank signers on Rocky LLC's escrow account, do I have a motion on the floor?
I move to have Paul Kiefer, Isaac Williams, and Brendan Hammond be the account signers for Rocky Incorporated, contained escrow account.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So next up is Lisa Park.
So, uh, we're leaving the month, so, uh, I got to the data, sorry if it's delayed. Um, I didn't have the uh, May and June numbers, uh, Captain Peter is the one who provided that report, so I will update this in the future. Um, that's why those numbers aren't there, nothing out of the ordinary, uh, we're still staying very busy. Um, uh, I I I have to tell you that our DUI. Uh, cases are through the roof, and they're continuing to get really, really bad, so. Uh, we're gonna start doing some stronger enforcement on that, we've invited the Oregon State Police to come in and help us with some of those. Uh, just because we can't keep up with them, so. Uh, aside from that, uh, we did uh, two conditional offers, uh. Uh, to fill some of the positions, uh, and then we did a conditional offer for. A model, which is awesome, they're really hard to get, so, uh, this individual already resides in Boardman. Um, has been an officer for probably seven years, so, uh, it'll be nice to bring him to the board. Uh, at that point, we should be sacked. Um, unfortunately, two of the uh, recruits are gonna have to go to the academy, so we're two years out. Uh, aside from that, are there any questions?
I have a question, um, how many uh, police officers do we have at this thing?
We have twelve, uh, with the 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 new additional will be thirteen. Um, and. There were some other things in the background that I can't get into today, um, but uh, that that may be great, so.
So, building department report?
So I didn't have one in your packet, because today was the day I should have prepared it. I didn't have time, but um, I can let you know that the permits seem to be down a little bit. So we're sure doing a lot of plan reviews, which means here pretty soon we're gonna be selling some of the nets. Um, we're still really enjoying the new software, we just had planning come online. So we're seeing how that's gonna work with committing. Um, towards the learning, our contractors have been very patient with us to try to. Let us know, hey, this isn't working, we can't get in.
Words to learn. Our contractors have been very patient with us to try to let us know, hey, this isn't working, we can't get in. So we're still kind of tweaking it, but it's really good software. We're enjoying it.
So the public works department report?
I have nothing at this place. I thought anyone with blue, I mean, um. They prepared these, you could run reading.
Does anybody wanna read it?
I think Walt is actually online. Um, if he had any questions, I think he's that HP guy. And see.
Does anybody have any questions on the public workshop report? No? So let's move on to, we don't have any committees. So we don't need to report senior manager.
Wow, what a first day, huh? Have a council, uh, chief and I are gonna split this up. So this morning, um, we had a staff meeting. We did some introductions, you know, the lovely traditional. Your name is calling, but we like to do, so that's always fun to start off. Um, and then I had the opportunity just to share like goals and visions of what I'd like to see. It really was a breathing meeting. I'm not a, a long-winded person. But what the plan is right now is I have, um, department head meetings tomorrow. And then during the meeting today, I asked every staff member, please come and see me. And my hope is to, from these meetings, create some values and goals moving forward, like this is what we stand for as a staff. Um, have kind of a mission, vision statement, um, to create from, build upon. Um, and then just to get, like, what we'd like to see, where some things that are working, what do we need to change, anything like that. So I really am excited about that. The other thing is I like to do the same thing with all the council members, is it with you? Um, and I also would like to work on kind of a, as a, as a city, as a council, what is our vision? What would you like to see? What are some values and goals that we, uh, that we hold to? And then once we as a council decide that, um, to post that on the website. Like right now, we have our motto, like on the river on the way, but like what do we stand for? What do we wanna see, you know, by ten years, things like that, um, that I'd like to discuss with you guys. And the other thing, just to pass on, we had sixty-seven garbage can, garbage vouchers given out for the month of July. Is that right? If I was given that, that's awesome. I love cleanliness. And then Carla and I had a really good conversation today and we kind of talked about some things like, um. Working on some green space underneath the power lines, just such a cool concept. Uh, and then along with that realigning, we have some B P A. Lines, dotted lines that need to be more on the B P A. There's the city version and there's like the actual D P A. And we want to get those more aligned and then have that conversation where we can do green space with them. Uh, and then Carla and I talked about doing an updated, uh, development code, municipal code. The comprehensive plan, the T S, the T S P, the M S I A M P.
I, Main Street, I. He's, she, she, she heard off about ten different acronyms.
So working on updated transportation system plan, uh, the main street interchange area management plan. And the downtown development plan. How we go about doing that, we can do it a ton of different ways, but the end process is. Public hearings, city council, and planning commission hearings. So that will be something forthcoming, but something Carla correct is in dire need of to do some updates.
She commented that, uh, Brent, she told Brandon that there will be a test. He made very good notes.
So that's all I have.
So, uh, uh, obviously with Brandon coming online, there's been a transition, uh, period. Uh, he spent, uh, some, some long days with Karen and going through files and trying to, uh, organize. Um, and then we met with a couple, uh, of individuals trying to, uh, finish up our, our road. That will lead back to Oregon Trail off Front Street. We need to get those deeds done. And so we met with those, a couple of people that we still need to receive those. Uh, we had a good meeting, good conversations today, so hopefully, uh, first part of next week, we might have that, uh, all these secured. And be able to move forward. Uh, we'll continue to work on those projects. Uh, a little bit of time with, with, uh, Brandon about, uh, uh, some of the projects that we've got going on. Main Street project, the Columbia Avenue project, the, the, the Front Street Loop Road project. Uh, the green space project, you know, we, just a lot of conversations. So we'll be busy for the next several months, but, uh. He's, he's got a, uh, a good helping dose of what's going on and there's still a bunch more to go, so.
Yeah, and you know the concept of you have, you hear of coaches leaving the college and at that level. Cause they're like, whoa, we have no teams coming in, we're gonna go skip. I like did the opposite. Walking into something, honestly, um, now I can't, I'm tired. But just what has been done, again, I, I was on the council for several years and you, you know, you kind of heard what Karen would say. But to actually see it and then to visualize the map and all these pieces, it is so cool. To see what is coming on the horizon and how, how amazing Boardman's gonna be. And just these little things that have taken a really long time and I get to reap the benefits of that. So it is. And all the benefits today are, you'll see those in the next years that I've done.
Any questions for either of us?
Have you got a house?
Oh, I sold my house.
Now I need a place to live.
I need.
So anybody know of a rental?
Yeah, rental first and then we're trying to figure out what to do, but yeah, rental.
Well, there's lots of spaces to build and the developers are very happy to do that for you.
Yes. I'm still kicking around the idea of I wanna be patient and wait a year for building. But rentals for sure, and really I think we close on the first.
Well, the mayor is not here to, um, give a report and I am not going to give a report because I don't have anything to.
I did wanna, I'll just say one more thing. Um, I did want to, um, welcome, um, our new city manager. Um, Mr. Hammond, I'm really excited, uh, to have you on board. Um, I didn't hear about a welcoming for our city manager. I don't know if there's gonna be one, Mr. Manager for the.
Their Karen's welcome meet for two days.
For the community, uh, to be able to just come meet you. Um, but, um, I think that that would be important if they, if we could arrange something. Um, so that the community can come and meet with, with you. Um, and then, um, along those lines as well, um, chief. Um, I think it might be a good idea as well when we have, um, incoming police officers to be able to get to meet them as well. Uh, maybe at a city, uh, council meeting where you can just say, here's our new officer.
That is our process. The problem is when they're at the academy, they don't need to come home during the morning. So it's just trying to get them when they can get here.
Okay.
So we will, as soon as we can get them in, that, that they come in, I put them on the spot, I make them speak. You know, just what they love to do. Um, I, I will say, if I could, I, I did, I did, I would be reluctant to say that we did have our. Uh, uh, state oriented city, small city meetings, um, at the senior center. Uh, Brendan and Christina were there. Uh, we had a fairly good turnout for the small cities, a lot of good conversations. Um, a lot of it was legislative updates and, 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 and with the league's lobbyists and some of the concerns we have. But different from moving forward, but, uh, it was, it was, it was nice to have it here. Uh, they thanked us and, and we're appreciative and we are appreciative of the seniors for providing the meals, so. Okay, that's all I have, sorry.
Does anybody else have anything?
I'm thinking we could have his car off on the night we do fireworks and, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, community night out.
People know on the twenty, it's the twenty fourth, right? No, it's the twenty fifth. Yeah, the twenty third. Yeah, there's stuff going on. Like, yeah, I just can't go into it right now.
You can't have fireworks on.
Oh, the twenty third, I'm busy too.
Everybody good? Okay, so a meeting in.